Hello, everybody.
I don't have to look so serious.
Yeah, I guarantee you we won't get fun.
Okay, got a couple of minutes before we can start. Who's got the best joke?
I got it, but I can't tell it.
Can you call his name? Yeah.
I promise you you'd laugh, but I get in trouble.
Yeah, you're being recorded. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead. If your stand will be led in a word of prayer by.
Nathan Barber. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day today, our many blessings. Father, just thank you for the opportunity we have recorded this meeting this morning. I ask that you be with these commissioners as they make important decisions for you and Van Zant County. Thank you for everyone that's in attendance here this morning and the families that are represented. Father, we thank you for the opportunities that we've had in the last few days to be with family and friends during the holiday season. And as we enter a new year of 2022, I ask that you just continue to lead, guide, and direct us in everything that we do. Father, be with us as we carry on with our responsibilities each day and give us safe travel to our next destinations. And I ask that you forgive us of our sins and all this, pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, of those allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I called a order of the regular meeting of the Van Zant County Commissioners Court on Wednesday, January the 5th, 2022, 9:01 a.m. Now its quorum is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the meetings of the Commissioners Court and approval, same for December the 22nd, 2021. We don't have those minutes. Is there a motion to table?
Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. They will bring him back the next, her office is running short handed. Skeleton crew will bring him back the next month. We got a motion second. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrad. Any questions or discussion about the bills that's been submitted for payment?
I would make a comment, Judge, since we've got a good crowd here. We don't rush through these, these bills are always available for anybody to look at. We study them before we come in here. So when we run through here, somebody says motion second, we pass it. We've already looked at them.
Any other discussion? Questions? Being none, all in favor of approving the county bills as submitted for payments, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general business. Is there any general business that we need to be made aware of? Anyone have any announcements or anything, anything happening? Okay.
We'll have the regular, every election year, the, at the Wood Community Center, the meet, candidate meet and debates on February 12th.
Okay, candidate meet and greet and debate. And debate, okay.
What time, day?
Is there any other announcements or anything we need to be made aware of? Okay, being none, we'll move to public comments. We had one sign up for public comments. Grant Goodwin would like to speak on item number 20 of the agenda.
This is, I'll be very.
You have, you have three minutes.
I won't take that. My name is Grant Goodwin, I'm a clean staff attorney. I'm here simply at request of our members who are in the precinct who is losing their, their constable to help with any transition, maybe answer any questions you may have. I'm quite well versed in government code as well as here to protect the interest of our members and just help the county out in any way. I'd be happy to speak with any county attorney, district attorney if necessary, and I'm just here to help our local member, Mr. Fannin, who asked me to come over here just to help the court in any way that I could.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. And I think the district attorney just heard that. It's, thank you for being here. No, no, no more public comments. No one else signed up. By LaFinn, you sign up. Do you have any sign? Okay, we'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider approving proclamation for War of 1812. Veteran Adrian Anglin Day in Van Zant County. Carrie Wolverton. Good morning.
Good to see you again.
I always love coming to see you. Well, first of all, on behalf of the genealogy library and genealogical society, we want to thank you all for your commitment to the history of this county and for serving our fine traditions and the longstanding commitment that you and your families have that I don't think everybody realizes that you're in this county. We have a first family of Van Zant County right here is our judge. And I wanted to tell you just for a minute about a man named Joseph Elmo, who was born in 1873 in Jackson County, Alabama. His parents were John, William, and Elizabeth Luth. Joseph's father, William, was a farmer. In 1893, Joseph married Eugenia Bates, who was born in 1874 in Vannan County, Texas. Her parents were George Bates and Mary Chute. Eugenia's father, George, was also a farmer. Joseph and Eugenia are buried in the Old Bethel Cemetery in Falco, Texas. Joseph and Eugenia's first child, William Madison, was born in 1894 in Texas. By 1900, they resided in Bristone County. In 1920, they resided in precinct one, Van Zant County, Texas, where Joseph owned his own farm. Their son Willie was also a farmer. Willie served in the U.S. Army from 1918 to 1919. He was a veteran of World War I. He's buried in the Old Bethel Cemetery down in Texas. William married Leona Tucker in 1921 in Van Zant County. Leona was born in 1902 in Arkansas. Their son, Bertil Vernon, was born in 1922 in Rockwell County.
That's right, that's correct.
Virgil Senior served in World War II. In 1945, he married Shirley Mae Wade, who was born in 1927 in Jackson, Van Zant County, Texas. Her parents were Iverson Wade and Jewel Boyd. Virgil Senior and Shirley were buried in the Haven of Memories Cemetery in Canton, Texas. Their son Virgil was born in 1947 in Smith County, Texas. The great grandson of Joseph Elmo serves today on the Van Zant County Commissioners Court. It is with great pleasure that the Van Zant County Genealogical Society awards a 100 years of Van Zant County certificate to Virgil Melton Junior today.
You want to go down and get a picture?
This is a surprise.
We like to keep going. And so tell everyone here, our genealogical library and society were committed to local history as well as genealogy. And so that's why we let, we want to let our community know how much we appreciate.
Thank you.
Okay, you want to go listen to somebody else?
That was 100 years of Virgil Melton being in Van Zant County.
Oh gosh, okay. So now I want to tell you about a man named Adrian Anglin. Here in the back of Asbury Cemetery in southeastern Van Zant County is the final resting place of one of our state's finest heroes. Buried next to his second wife, Phoebe Parker, Adrian Anglin lies there with eternal peace. He was born in 1796 in Lee County, Virginia, one of 11 children of John and Jemima Anglin. Adrian served as a private and captain Sanders Company, 7th Regiment, in the Virginia militia in the War of 1812. He married Margaret Kent in 1814 in Powell County, Virginia. He farmed with his brothers and then moved to Edgar County, Illinois, in the 1820s to continue farming. Margaret and Adrian had one daughter, Marguerite Betty Anglin. After his wife's death, Adrian married Phoebe Parker, the daughter of John and Sarah Parker, in 1830 in Edgar County, Illinois. Richard and Sarah Duty were the parents of 14 children. Elder John and Sarah Parker were the parents of 11 children, which included, you know, a well-known child, Cynthia Ann Parker, and her sister Phoebe Parker. The Anglin, Duty, and Parker families settled together in Illinois, then moved by a 31 family wagon train to early Texas in 1833. The Anglin, Studios, and Parkers built Fort Parker in 1835. Most of the Anglin family, including Adrian, formed the first company, the Texas Rangers, with Silas Parker in 1835. Adrian was one of the original 25 men who were appointed to Texas Rangers. During the Texas Revolution, he served in Captain Alicia Clapp's company, Texas Bonzeers, Captain Eli Seals' company, Texas Rangers, and Captain Silas Parker's company, Texas Rangers. In 1836, Cynthia Ann Harper and her brother John, with three others, were captured by the Indians during a massacre at Fort Parker, which resulted in many of the fort's occupants being killed. Cynthia later married Comanche Chief Pettin McCona. Their daughter, Little Prairie Flower, whose Comanche name was Totsiaf, was initially buried in Asbury Cemetery next to her uncle and aunt, Adrian and Phoebe Parker Anglin. Adrian furnished food and supplies to the Texas Revolutionary Army. He received 4,428 acres of land and head rights for his service, a week and a labor, in Henderson and Van Zant Counties. After Silas Parker's death at Fort Parker in 1836, Adrian and Phoebe raised two small children of Silas, as well as the son of Alicia Anglin. They also raised the five children of Richard Duty, who was killed in 1847. After Phoebe's death, Adrian married his fellow here in Van Zant County. Adrian died in 1865. His only child, Marguerite Betty Anglin, married Richard Duty Jr. in 1833 in Edgar County, Illinois. After Richard's death, she married James Jefferson Oakley in 1848 in Anderson County. Adrian's grave marker has now been completely refurbished, restored, and reset. Two medallions have been placed on it, one to honor his service as a veteran of the War of 1812, and the other honors him as a veteran of the Republic of Texas. A former Texas Ranger cross has been placed beside his tombstone, signifying his service in the most notable law enforcement agency in the world. We respectfully request a proclamation for the true Texas hero, protector of settlers, women, and children, who lies at eternal rest in Van Zant County, making, making the 29th day of January 2022, War of 1812, and Republic of Texas veteran Adrian Anglin Day. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Would you like to read the proclamation?
Whereas the War of 1812, known as the Second War for American Independence, was fought on land and sea from the 18th of June, 1812 to the 17th of February, 1875, I mean, 1815. And whereas the sacrifices by sailors, soldiers, and citizens who served in the War of 1812 further defended the liberties previously won in the American Revolution. And whereas the veterans of the War of 1812 were among the first settlers of Texas, with over 150 of these veterans known to be buried in Texas, today thousands of Texas citizens trace their land and debt to these patriotic settlers. And whereas Private Adrian Anglin honorably served in the War of 1812 in the 7th Regiment, Captain Saunders Company, Virginia militia, whereas Adrian Anglin came to Texas in 1833, outbuilt Fort Parker and became a Texas Ranger in 1835, protecting the settlers and citizenry. And whereas Adrian Anglin served in Captain Alicia Clapp's company in 1835, and in Captain Eli Seals' Texas Rangers in 1836. Whereas Adrian Anglin furnished food and supplies to the Texas Revolutionary Army and received head rights in Henderson and Van Zant Counties. And whereas Adrian Anglin settled in Van Zant County and now lies at eternal rest in Asbury Cemetery.
Is there a motion to approve the proclamation? Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now therefore, I, Don Trapeza, Van Zant County Judge, Texas do hereby proclaim the 29th day of January of 2022 as War of 1812 and Republic of Texas veteran Adrian Anglin Day, dated January the 5th, 2022. Thank you. Thank you for the work you do.
Oh, you're very welcome. And I'll be back again.
Item number eight, discuss and consider and approve re-applying for the VOCA, which is Victims of Crime Act, formerly grant to fund the Victims Assistance Project for the 2022-2023 term. Our district attorney, Tonda Curry, is going to represent this.
Thank you, Judge. This is the grant that funds the victim assistance coordinator from my office, Melissa Cheney. She's here with me today. I call Melissa our multiplier because Melissa makes my lawyers so much more effective and, and she takes care of the victims and all of the things that the victims need up until the time of trial. And that way my lawyers don't have to do it and they have more time to focus on being lawyers and doing what we pay them to do. This is a grant, this is the eighth year of this grant. It funds Melissa's salary, her office supplies, her travel and training, everything that we need to have a victim assistance coordinator in the office. And the great thing about it is statutorily, we're required to have one. So if we didn't get the grant, the county would have to be paying for it. It is a matching fund grant. Historically, we have done, we have set it up where the county pays the fringe benefits for Melissa's salary, and that constitutes the 20% matching funds. The amount that we're asking for this year, salary, office supplies, travel, training, everything, is about $57,000. So again, just by the county paying the fringe benefits, the insurance and taxes and that kind of stuff, it will cover the 20% max. So we're here asking that we get to apply for that grant again. The application is due in February. I believe it's the 10th. And of course, the term of the grant doesn't start until next fiscal year. We just have to apply.
Any questions for Tonda?
Well, I think it's good. It's a mandate that we don't have to pay for.
Right, that's right.
That's one of the few.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the few.
Well, and Melissa works hard. You know, we have to go over to Ed Todd and make the presentation and convince them that we're worthy of the money and that we're using it well. And she works hard to make sure that we have all the statistics and numbers up to date and reported quarterly that, that we're required to do to keep in, to keep in compliance.
So move Pearson. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second. I got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrad. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. You do a great job, Melissa. And she never does come represent it. She forces Tonda to come represent it. She says she gets nervous in front of you guys.
She did. She came one time, remember?
Yeah. But you do do a great job and I think it's very important. Item number nine. Discussing, considering, approved resolution for the, well, we're gonna bypass it. We're not ready for that. That's a adult sexual assault response team that we're putting together. That's another. That's another mandate from Austin, says, hey, county.
Do you have a sexual assault response team? They even tell us, and the commissioners are responsible for appointing the members, but they tell us who those members have to be. And I've been trying to work with the judge and we because we're so small, we don't have a sexual assault nurse examiner in Van Zant County, so we're working, there's some alternatives you can do if you don't have one, and we're working on getting the last two names to fill out the team.
So I'd make a motion to table that. Motion, second by Commissioner Melton. We will bring it up once. Well, I think we've got a couple of positions on there. We need to get filled and we'll bring that back to the court. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number 10, discuss and consider allowing the sheriff's office to accept donation of radios from Kaufman County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff, you want to address the court?
Well, this is, currently we're on the old VHF system and Kaufman County has upgraded to digital. They no longer have a use for these radios. We're in short supply of portable radios and car radios. And we actually pulled two fire radios out of some older patrol vehicles today to go into the DA's office so they could have radios for their investigators. So this will just help us in being able to supply our deputies with portable radios when they're out in field working. And it's low cost to county, Kaufman County's rich and donated. These hand radios and several mobile radios and other vehicles. Also some charging banks to, to access permission to accept these.
Again, motion by Commissioner LaPrad.
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. We're just talking about radios.
Yeah, these are just radios that operate in our current system. Just help get us through until we.
What's this? Command trailer?
That's where the radios are located. They had several of their command trailers.
So we're not, they're not transferring the command trailer.
They just transferred the shares from their command. They said to put on their, where they took them out of. The other, the other page shows they took those out of the actual sheriff's office.
Both the Kenwood and Motorola fit our system?
Yes. This is, this, these are radios, Kenwoods, Motorola's, and they're all have been the nation's system. They're compatible.
Okay, any other questions, discussion?
This is just kind of a mandate.
Being none, all in favor say aye. Those, those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. There'll be no action on item number 11. We'll pass it. Go to item number 12. Discuss, consider, and approve radio broadband tower projects for the American Rescue Plan Funds. I believe, Commissioner Prad, you, Commissioner Prad, you placed that on there?
Yes, sir. We've talked about this in several workshops, multiple workshops, and I just wanted to get on here to get official action taken on it. It's the C25 radio project and the broadband tower project that work together toward the digital communications that we've, we already had it on top of the list, working toward with the American Rescue Funding Plan money with Mr. Bass and Grant Works, and I just wanted to get on here and get official. This is the direction we're going. So I'll make a motion that that we approve this as the direction the county is going with the American Rescue Fund money.
Okay, have a motion. Is there a second?
A second, Pearson.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions, discussion? That's a surprise.
Not at this, this time. There's not, no, really no discussion. We don't have any numbers or figures or anything. At some point in time, there probably will be some discussion about funds.
When we get down to the RFPs, that comes back before us to approve again.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, I understand. I'm, I'm, make sure I'm right here. I'm understanding this is all what we've discussed in our workshops, but it has to go through the court for us to move forward with Mr. Bass and everything, just like we did on the cyber, cybersecurity and the, and the books that we, that we're that we're done with.
Okay. Okay, have a motion second. All in, any more discussion or question? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number 13, discuss, consider, and approve engineering, architectural.
What about 11?
But we passed the.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, item number 11. There is, we have no applications for that. The ones that, their term has expired, but they, they will continue to serve in that capacity until someone's qualified to replace those.
Thank you.
And item number 13, discuss, consider, approve engineering, architectural surveying firm per recommendation of the committee chairman Chad LaPrad, precinct one commissioner for the American Rescue Plan Fund. Mr. Prad?
Yes, sir. This goes through the American Rescue Funding with Grant Works, so we're seeing it. We only have one person. We only have one person turn in for qualifications, that was Trot Communications. We had a select committee, part of standards, to follow with the grant process to grade them. And so of course, here we are ready now to have the court approve and utilize this company for engineering consulting, help design the radio and broadband project. So I'll make a motion that we approve Trot Communications.
Okay, have a motion from Commissioner LaPrad. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion?
Again, this is just for recommendations.
They'll design the specs that we'll use for the RFP. Of course, they'll come back to us and we'll approve those specs before those are. But this is an engineering firm to get an official design.
Do you have anything to add, Miss Seale? Is that the BISY open yesterday? Okay. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approval of five thousand dollar donation from, how do you say that? Oh, Geng General Art Agricultural LLC for repairs on Van Zand County Road thirty-eight twenty-one in precinct three.
It's a, it's probably what better known is the two-five, they're big, big organic dairy that operates in precinct three. And they, they use this road quite a bit and which they're entitled to use it because they're part of Van Zand County. And they, they approached me and said they'd like to make a donation to the county to to do some repairs on that road that they felt like that's their neighborly responsibility. And so I'm gonna make a motion, we accept this five thousand dollar donation and the five thousand dollars will be spent for material on County Road thirty-eight twenty-one.
Okay, that's a motion.
That's a motion.
Commissioner Pearson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approval of seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars reimbursement from Texas Association of School Boards for damages from Edgewood ISD school bus fire on Van Zand County Road thirty-one nineteen.
Yes, sir. This is an insurance plan where the Edgewood ISD is doing repair that road for the, we just worked on that road and had a real bad bus fire that damaged the road. And we've got a temporary fix on it right now. We sealed it to get through the winter and this is to make repairs on that road. I guess it'll actually go into precinct ones. It was in precinct three, it's now in precinct one. And so the funds will go into precinct one's road bridge. Chad will see that the repairs get done next summer. That's a motion to accept.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrad. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss, consider and approve engagement letter with Patello Brown and Hill LLP to audit the financial statements of Van Zand County for year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Miss Seale, you'd like to address the court?
Judge, Commissioner, good morning.
Good morning.
Time flies. It's time to approve the audit with Patello Brown and Hill again. If you'll turn to page seven on the report that I provided you. You can see the timing of our audit will be, they'll come in and perform the year-end procedures in March of twenty twenty-two and they will issue an audit report to the court in June. The audit will not exceed forty thousand three hundred dollars. This is just an annual engagement letter that we sign each year. And I just need the court's permission to have Judge Kirkpatrick sign that on behalf of Van Zand County.
And that's something we worked hard on since, as county judge, when I come in, we we was getting our outside audit after we'd already set up the budget for the next year. And we didn't know where it was and we worked hard to get it moved up. June is about the time we start our budget stuff and you need to know where you finished last year before you start next year. And it, it's, it's been, and I'm very pleased that they can get it to us in June. And they've been doing it virtual. Is that what they're still?
Still plans for virtual as far as I know. And this year, we will not be, have to have a single audit. We did not spend the threshold of seven hundred and eighty thousand on the federal grant side. So we won't be including a single.
That's good. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West, second, second by Commissioner Pearson. All in, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. You can go ahead and get started, Miss Seale. And that works very well because with them doing it virtual, they're not here, but they just contact Sandy and she uploads that stuff, shoots it to them and, and it works. It's very smooth. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider allowing precinct one road and bridge to enter items into Renee Bates online auction. You want to address the court, Commissioner LaPrad?
Yes, sir. I was gonna add some stuff to the auction that Commissioner Pierce was putting his stuff in. I am gonna remove the Boomax. Precinct four was interested in it and they had helped me tremendously when I first took office and get it up and going. So we're gonna transfer it to them. I haven't had any of the commissioners mention being interested in the rest of equipment, so I'll be adding it. I did have it done as an addendum to as, you may gotta read all of it into the motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But it will consist of two dump trucks, a pickup truck.
Okay. List them for, for transparency, each item. Now, on the Boomax, what about the tractor?
It's going with the Boomax.
So you're gonna remove the tractor and the Boomax?
Yes, sir. There's always no one line item.
Okay, so we can scratch it?
Yes.
Okay, and if you want to list the, you don't have to give those VIN numbers, but if you just put what you're putting in.
Yes, sir. It's a nineteen ninety-two international dump truck, a nineteen ninety-three international dump truck, a nineteen ninety-nine Ford three-quarter ton pickup and a crack seal machine on a shredder.
Can this stuff run?
Actually, yes, sir. Two of the dump trucks, they're driving. Granted, they need a little bit of work if you're gonna try to use.
So is that, Mr. LaPrad, is that a motion?
Yes.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaPrad, second by Commissioner Milton to allow precinct one road and bridge to enter those items listed with it, except he is removing the John Dair tractor and the boom into the Renee Bates online auction. Got a motion second. Any question, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider approval of Herrera Acres in precinct four. Tim, is that yours?
That's mine. This is a tier two. It's a, there's just two lots on existing county road. And they've done everything required of them and I moved, and, and the next one, which is nineteen, it's two other, another one that they're doing is two other lots right across the street from each other. Why they didn't incorporate them, it was saving them a lot of money, but they didn't do it. So I make a motion, we approve both of them.
Okay, we're just gonna take them one at a time.
Okay.
Let's, so you make a motion to approve the Herrera Acres plant in precinct four?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider approval of Sierra Acres in precinct four. I think you just.
Same thing.
Same thing.
You make a motion? I make a motion, we approve.
Okay. I got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about those plant? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty, discuss and consider accepting a resignation slash retirement letter from Constable Precinct One, Mickey Hansen. I mean, you have the, you have it before you. Let me, it says to to Judge Kirkpatrick slash commissioners, as of January the second, twenty twenty-two, I'm retiring from my elected constable position. It is in the best interest of my health and family. Thank you, Judge. Signed, Mickey Hansen. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept Constable Hansen's retirement resignation letter.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner LaPrad, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget amendments. I don't have any. So we'll skip, skip twenty-one and go to twenty twenty, we'll go to twenty-two. Discuss and consider approval of November twenty twenty-one Financial and Investment Report of County Treasurer be entered into the minutes of commissioners' court. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion for Kenny? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-three, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government and approval of entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, would you like to address that?
Yeah, we had four of nineteen, Rick to her, but this just four months, I'm not surprised. And we'll have all by the end of month.
Is that a motion to approve the report submitted? Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion on the reports that were submitted? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine forty. At this time, we'll move into a closed executive session in compliance with section five-five-one point zero seven-four of the Texas Government Code. We are entering into executive session at nine forty.